Hello, everyone. Welcome to today's special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It is Monday, July 22nd, and it's a little after 6:30 PM. A roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Mayor Mohan.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor, Councilmember Wei, and Vice Mayor Frue are absent.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, and the subject for today's special meeting is the approval of lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels resulting from abatement of public nuisance for the annual weed and brush abatement programs. Madam City Manager, there's a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Clerk will give a short presentation on the item.
Yes, I'm going to provide a verbal report. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for being present this evening. So this is the final step in the weed and brush abatement program cycle, which began in November 2023. The county's Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency weed abatement program officers have been monitoring and inspecting parcels for fire safety throughout the year. Every parcel in the program is inspected to determine if the property has been properly abated by the established deadline, which is April 30. Certain parcels have been declared a public nuisance and are identified in the program assessment report, which is Exhibit A of the draft resolution and Attachment B in the agenda. Additional fees are charged if the properties fail inspection and must be re-inspected. Additional fees are charged if abatement work is ordered on the properties when the minimum fire safety standards have not been met, or if the owner requests that the county assign a contractor to perform the necessary work. This year, there were no parcels from the brush abatement program that were non-compliant, so the assessment report applies to weed abatement program parcels. Tonight's hearing requests consideration of a resolution confirming assessments on properties for unpaid abatement services, and to hear objections from any parcel owners on the assessment list. If approved, the county will be able to achieve full cost recovery through an assessment appearing on the property tax bill for each parcel. Our weed abatement program manager, Mo Cumery, is available for any questions you may have on the weed abatement program process.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do we have any questions for the City Clerk? Council? Okay, oh, Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, so is there any way that a person can get off of the weed abatement list if they, for instance, receives a notification and then they remedy their property before April 30th? Would that pull them off the list, or would they still end up on the list?
My name is Mo Cumery. I'm the manager of the weed abatement program. The program is set up that when a property is added to the program for non-compliance, it has to, of course, go through this process before we can do anything on the property. Once it's on, it remains on until it demonstrates three consecutive years of voluntary compliance, and then it's removed. There's also the option for a property owner to contact us requesting a built-in landscaped exemption. When a property is built and landscaped sufficient to remove the risk of a fire hazard, they can be removed, excuse me, they can be removed for that as well.
So with built-in landscaped, what does that mean exactly?
Well, we deal with a lot of vacant lots or abandoned properties, and sometimes they're bad for many years, and then somebody comes in and builds up the property, landscapes it sufficient to remove the risk of a fire hazard, and there's no need to inspect it anymore.
Okay, thank you. Now, in the past, there have been actions by the council to remove a parcel from the list. What's the process for that?
Well, this is the second public hearing. It's a three-step process. Back, I think, in November, you passed a resolution declaring weeds, brush, and rupture public nuisance, and setting a date for a hearing. That hearing was the opportunity for property owners to say, "I shouldn't be on this program," and to give their reasons to you, and the county would counter, and then you would make that ruling deciding whether or not it would be appropriate to remove the properties. And this council has done that several times, and since your word is it, that's what we do. This hearing is specifically for fees against properties that were not removed by council earlier in the year. So we were then required to inspect and did inspect all of those properties.
So with regards to this hearing, the list is set for who is on it. So what can we, we have some members of the public that have come, probably about their parcels. What can we do as a council to be of some assistance?
Well, people can come and contest the fees for whatever their reasons that they have. In general, the expectation is if the council believes that we were in error, overzealous, did something, looked at the wrong property, whatever that might be, that those would be grounds for waiving the fees. Most of the properties, as you can notice, is the $96 fee, so we're just charging for the inspection that we did conduct. So we're just trying to recover those costs. But if one of these that has a higher fee said, "Well, that wasn't my property, and I can't prove otherwise," then it would be appropriate to remove those fees.
Right, thank you. So the $96 is cost recovery, and it is not a profit to the county, it is simply a cost recovery?
We're not legally able to make a profit.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to emphasize that part. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, that, I mean, the purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the fees that were assessed for the work performed by the county are proper and fair. So the parcel, there's already been an opportunity to object to a parcel being on this list. If that objection was not raised at the time, it's waived. And so really, the proper subject is whether the fees that were assessed were properly charged by the county. You have the report provided by the county and the clerk. That is prima facie evidence that those fees are proper. The people appearing today will have the opportunity to rebut that evidence, and that's the decision that you're here to make today.
Thank you for the clarification.
So I know $96 was the fee that has been charged generally, but there are a couple of items where it's considerably more than $96. Is there a reason for that?
Yes. $96 covers the cost of the inspection, but if the property, and some of these rolls from last year, because anything, this season continues through October, but we have to turn the tax roll in by August 10th. So any fees that would occur that aren't currently on this list would roll to next year, and they would have the same opportunity to challenge those fees at that time. So anything over that was for work done on a property, for the actual abatement, and/or failed inspections that may have occurred as well. There are multiple fees that would be charged. $96 is charged to every property, pass or fail, but when they fail, additional charges would be applied. And if we then come back and have to abate the property because the property owner still failed to comply, they would pay those charges and an additional administrative fee.
Okay, so just following up on that, Union Pacific, for example, it's $4,700 that they owe, or that they've been assessed?
That's the proposed assessment for the property for work that was performed. On Union Pacific properties, we generally have to abate them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chow?
So the Union Pacific, is that along the railroad?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All of those would be railroad right-of-ways. A lot of them back up to fences, to homes and such, so it's crucial that those be maintained in a fire-safe condition.
Yeah, so if you don't perform the work necessarily, there might be fire.
Yes.
Big cost by that, and then the property damage will be more than the cost that you charge to abate them.
Absolutely.
And then, yeah, I see that some are over $1,000, $2,000, or $3,000, so has the property owners received an itemized list of what these charges are?
In the beginning of the year, when we send the notice to destroy, which is the legal notice, which also tells them of the first hearing, the backside of that is a price list that tells them what they'll pay for the inspection, if the property's not compliant, and if we perform the abatement, the administrative cost, and a breakdown of the types of work that could be done, and the cost for that type of work. We have not sent them an itemized statement on this. There's not a requirement for us to do that.
Okay, so we don't know, for example, this $3,059, I'm just picking a random one, so we don't know if it's only from this year, or from two years ago, or...
It would be this year or last year. It will never be beyond that. Those fees are from last year.
And then you are only charging for the work that you have done, right?
Well, there are administrative charges with the work, yes.
Okay.
And those are spelled out on that document that I described earlier.
But then no itemized list, so they need to read through all the possible ones?
If they want to find that out, they can call our office. We'd be happy to share the information.
Okay.
Because this goes to their property tax bill, it doesn't get itemized.
Oh, okay, so they can call your office to get...
We're happy to answer those questions.
Itemize the list if they want, okay.
Councilmember Moore? We will get another chance to debate it, so if you want to wait, we can wait, or... Oh, you can go ahead.
Yeah, this is pretty quick. So just when I'm looking at the numbers, most all of these parcels have $96, and then if you could repeat, if I'm looking at something that's like a $1,288 for a home, my assumption would be that you abated it for them.
Last year.
Okay, and then that...
We haven't performed any abatements in Cupertino this year yet.
Oh.
So we can guarantee those were from last year.
Okay, and then that bill goes to their property tax. They're not going to be having to write a check, it's going on to their property taxes.
Correct, it goes directly to the property tax bill.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so let's go to public comments. Are there any cards, Madam City Clerk?
I see one hand raised virtually requesting to speak. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please submit a blue speaker card in the next nine minutes, and you will be called on. Mayor, I will go ahead and call on the person virtually, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
That is Jim. And Jim, I see you've unmuted yourself, but we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm new to this, and so this is, I'm not used to using this stuff, and I get windows that keep popping up on me here, so, okay, so, but you can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am the owner of number 95 on the assessment list, and I'm here today to challenge that. I did not get a notification back in the beginning of the year to inform me of my appeal right, and so I'm here today indicating that I maintain my property, I try to do the best that I can, and my property is cleaned up, so I'm asking to be removed from the program, and for the $96, the $96 assessment to be removed also.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is that all that you would like to say on your public comment for this item?
Yeah, I should have taken pictures, but I didn't know that I could present pictures showing the condition of the property. I had talked to one of the inspectors today, this afternoon. I had talked to one of the inspectors, a woman, I don't remember, oh, I don't remember her name, but anyway, she had indicated that they had some pictures that were indicating that I was trying to maintain the property and that it had been cut, and so I'm just indicating, unfortunately, sometimes the weather kind of gets involved, and then I kind of miss out from the time I clean it up to the time the county comes out to inspect it. And so I'm indicating that it is clean now, and that I'm asking to be removed from the program and to not be assessed the $96.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And we have no other hands raised virtually. I will see how many speaker cards we have. Okay, we have two cards requesting to speak from in Community Hall. David Guy and Zhang Lu. David, would you like to provide your comments now and address the council? You have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, so I live at 10399 South Tantao. We are on the list. My family received notice summer of last year. I unfortunately am responsible for the property. I was out of the country for urgent work issue. We subsequently resolved the issue. We've hired a gardener, submitted the appropriate documentation in November. At that time, it was very unclear from the documentation that we received that we had to appear in order to ask to be removed from the list. We were under the impression that it simply, the form needed to be filled out and sent in. We did so, only now did we realize that we were still on the abatement list. I was under the impression that I'd be able to come here and ask to be removed. When I spoke to someone at the county last week, Thursday or Friday last week, they said that we did, in fact, pass the most recent inspection, and that our property should be clear, but the only way that we could do anything about it was to come and talk to the council. So here I am, asking to be removed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Zhang Lu. Welcome, Zhang.
Thank you, honored councilmember. My name's Zhang Lu. I'm here for 10524 South Tantao Avenue, item number 94 in your list. First, I'm here, I did not receive the first notice, and before, I was cleaning the yard by myself, but later, I switched to a professional program called Longstar. I ordered bi-weekly service from them, and I can show from here, I can print out this from this app, my maintaining history. It started since April of this year, and I can, I have pictures of each maintenance. So every time the Longstar professional cleaned up the yard, they will send us a picture to review the work and approve the payment. I have recorded of all the pictures. Hence, I argue that I maintain my property well, and I request that to be removed from the list and waive the fees. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and next, we have Ping Ha Weili. Ping, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I'm Wei. I'm one of the owner of Double Six Number One John Drive. Number one, we didn't receive a letter from you. Number two, maybe confusion, because my labor, who is more than 90 years old, old couple, so their husband died, husband died, so they didn't clean the yard, so it means that they have a separation, the grass grow really big, and maybe you got confused with these two properties. And we used to have a professional cleaner to clean our front yard and backyard for many years, for almost five years, so I don't think it's us. So unless you gave me evidence, it's really our property. Then afterwards, we build a new house, everything destroyed, so I don't think it's our property. So I strong against that you should charge me $96. I really want you remove our name from the list.
Okay, does that conclude your comments?
Pardon?
Does that conclude your comments?
Are you done? Are you finished?
Yeah, my item, my item number is 48.
Okay.
Yeah, what I want to say is you may confuse with my labor, because they are old couple, nearly 100 years old, and in last few years, the husband died, so the old lady probably couldn't take care of the garden very well, so they have separation, and neighborhood help them to clean the yard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, just ask Mo to explain how a parcel is added into the program, and that, to clarify, that once a program is added onto the list, how long they remain on the list, regardless of whether or not they clear their property?
Okay, and can we also get Mo to address each of these cases?
I believe Mo will be speaking with each of these persons.
Okay. Properties are added to the program because they've been observed to be non-compliant during the fire season. That may be either by complaint. Code enforcement may send us a complaint, a neighbor can complain. We then go out, look at the property, and verify that it is or is not a problem as far as the minimum fire safety standards are concerned. We take photographs, we send a letter to the property owner informing them that they are non-compliant, and will be added to the list. Everybody on this list received a letter to the same address that this, any letters for this went to back in December, informing them of the deadline, and the expectations, and the fact that $96 would be charged to their property if it remained on the program. Every property here, everybody here tonight, their property was on the program, it was inspected, and all we're trying to do here is recover the cost of the actual inspection. Everybody mentioned the $96. As far as the property's identification, we use electronic mapping and GPS information to verify that we're at the correct properties, and then we double-check that back in the office to verify the addresses. So in the case of the last speaker, I have two IDs, APN numbers, that are one-digit off, so I have to assume that that's the neighbor they may be referring to. Once a property goes on the program, it remains on until it demonstrates three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. That means that at the time of the inspection, the first inspection, it's done and meets the minimum fire safety standards, and then remains in compliance for the remainder of that fire season, which ends at the end of October.
And Mayor, if I may, I just would like to add that the City Clerk's office sent letters in addition to the county letters in December, as well as a reminder in February to any parcel that was on the assessment report.
Okay, so just to clarify, then, every property owner gets three notifications, then? One from the county, one from you, the city, and a reminder from the city?
And then the City Clerk's office also sent a hearing notice for tonight's meeting 10 days ago.
Okay.
To every, if they're on this assessment report, then they should have received a letter in the mail from the clerk's office.
Okay. So if they've been assessed the $96, it doesn't necessarily mean that they haven't taken care of the problem, right?
Correct.
It's the cost of you going out to do the inspection.
That's the cost, yes, that's the cost of the inspection itself.
Okay, okay, so regardless of what the state of their property is in, you have gone to inspect, and therefore, there's a fee associated with it.
If we found the property to be non-compliant, the fee would be higher, because there's an additional fee to assess.
Okay. All right, so all the ones that we've heard today were $96. Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
So, I, so a property could be reported by anyone, right? Could be, you mentioned the neighbor?
Yes. Anyone can report the property. It doesn't get added because it's reported. If it's reported, we go investigate, determine that it is or is not a problem. We get hundreds of complaints that turn out to not be problems, and we don't send them anything.
So that initial inspection, you are not charging for that initial inspection?
We cannot charge them for that.
Okay.
They have to first go through the public hearing process. They don't get that list unless we've done all that other work before.
Yeah, so if someone reports a property, you go to an initial inspection, that's not charged.
Correct.
But if the initial inspection found it's a valid complaint, so the property will get on this list, that you will send a notice in December, right?
Yes, we'll send a notice immediately, informing them that they're going to be added to the list. Then we will send a notice for all of the properties in the program in December, the same as if they've been on the program for the last couple of weeks.
Okay, so someone reports it, you do an initial inspection. If passed the inspection, they won't receive any notice.
Correct.
Nothing will be done.
Correct.
But if they didn't pass, you will send a letter immediately. That's the first letter.
Yes.
And then in December, you will send a list, so the first one, as notified, then they are added to the list.
Yes.
Second one in December, notify all, everyone that's already on the list that you're on the list. Here is a list of...
And that they have an opportunity to come here to contest that.
Uh-huh, to contest that. And then the city clerks also send a letter in December, in addition to that letter from the county. So the city clerk letter will be from the city.
Yes.
It should have the logo of the city of Cupertino.
Yes.
And to the property address. And then, I think there is another letter, the fourth one, in February, to notify of the public hearing?
Yes, a reminder to abate properties prior to the April 30 deadline, and letting them know, we actually include the minimum fire safety standards as well.
Uh-huh, so that's the fourth letter in February?
Yes.
For notifying of the April 30 deadline?
Yes.
And then we had, have a public hearing to, so they have a chance to get off the list. Do they get another notice for that meeting?
So to clarify, they are not removed from the list unless there is some type of an error?
Yeah, I know, they can contest that in a public hearing. I'm just wondering, would they get another notice of that public hearing where they can contest?
For this meeting.
So that, that will be this meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
There was a prior public hearing this year, Kirsten, is that correct?
In January.
Yes, and that was the public hearing where they had the opportunity to contest that, whether, the fact that the properties were on the list. Is that correct, Kirsten?
That public hearing was in January. Okay.
Yeah.
January 17th.
So, yeah, so just, I mean, just to reiterate sort of what I said earlier, is that really the question here is not whether the properties are on the list or not, the question's here is whether the charges are reasonable and appropriate. I think, you know, you've heard from a number of people who have, you know, have, and from the people, the objections we've heard, that the only question, I think, for you is whether the $96 inspection fee that's been charged for these properties is reasonable and appropriate, and so that's, you know, you have the county's report in front of you, so I think that's the information you have on which to base your decision.
Okay, so, so there would be the first letter right after inspection, and it didn't pass. The second letter in December from the county about the public hearing in January, and they have a chance to contest.
It also included the legal requirements, the minimum fire safety standards, the question and answer. It also gave them information that if they weren't going to make the deadline, how they could request an extension from our office, so that we gave them an opportunity to work with us to help avoid any additional fees besides the inspection fee.
Because they can also contact your office, and if they already did all the work, maybe they, you, when, in the January meeting, a lot of times, you will say, this part, this property is... a lot of times you will say this part, this property is already in compliance. And then you will even recommend removing because they are already in compliance. Right, I think there, you had done that in the past.
We've had that where people have done something to change the property so that the issues that we found when it was non-compliant no longer exist. But just because they cut the weeds wouldn't be sufficient to remove them, at least for us, wouldn't be sufficient to remove them because it was the issue that they hadn't cut them before, they're going to grow back. Will they continue to keep it cut? Historically, we have found through our program that if we go for three years, it builds a habit and they're more likely to continue to take care of their property. We've had many times dropping a property at one or two years that they would go for a year or so and then fall back onto the program because they just didn't do the work.
Okay, so basically, we have two public hearings. January one is when people can contest to get removed from the property.
Yes.
Before that public hearing, sounds like there should be three notices sent. The initial one went from county, went from the city. And this is the second public hearing where the purpose is to contest any charges. So we are not removing anyone from the property. But if they disagree with the charges, this is where they can challenge it at?
Yes.
And before this meeting, they have received a letter in February that they should do things before April. So the county doesn't need to do any abatement to avoid this additional charge.
Any additional charge above the $96.
Mayor, I believe our guest from the county has already answered these questions.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Moore, last comment?
Yes, so just want to clarify, the $96 covers the cost for the county. And perhaps the, our city attorney could respond to this. Are we incurring costs to the city which actually aren't being recovered? It's, that sounds like 96 is just the inspection, but we're sending out letters and repeat letters and holding these hearings.
Yeah, so I actually defer that to our city clerk, Kirsten. I don't know if we have any cost recovery for your office's time in administering this program.
So the council did approve many years ago an allowance for postage fees to send out these additional supplemental mailings which amount to a few hundred dollars. And then I can't account for staff costs. I don't believe that is recovered in any way. That's just a part of, it's an operational, operational cost as part of a function of the city clerk's office.
Right, so I think the answer to your question then is that, no, the city does not have cost recovery. The relatively limited cost the city encourages is paid out of the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I would just add, any fees, if they were waived, would come out of the general fund. The city, the county has to recover their fees regardless. And so they've conducted the work and so they are looking to be made whole. And so the city would have to subsidize that cost, any costs that were waived.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I just want to clarify one thing that the city clerk said. That would be true if fees were waived other than for cause. If we were wrong, the city would not be responsible for those fees. That would be on us. But if we didn't, if we didn't make a mistake, but the city felt there was grounds to dismiss, we would ask the city to recover those fees because we did perform our job.
Councilmember Chow, you still, your light is still on?
Yeah, could we have additional time to go through each of the case? So we just, since they are here, could we get additional time so I can ask about each case?
Mayor, perhaps we could take a recess and Mo could work with each of the parcel owners?
I'm sorry?
Perhaps we could take a brief recess and Mo could work with the parcel owners on their issues to see if there was any resolution first?
Okay, all right, let's take a brief recess and have staff work it out. 10 minutes. Thank you.
Okay.
Session after a short recess.
Yeah, could I, maybe I could suggest that maybe we get a report from Mo on his conversation with the assessed property owners? And then, you know, unless there's more information that council wants to provide it, we could, I would recommend going to a motion and a vote.
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, I spoke with all of the property owners, explained the idea that it passed inspection. And, excuse me, and that if they have specific justifications why they think it should be removed, I'm still happy to consider those after this. Right now, I don't have information from last year. I have this year's information. I don't have pictures of when the property failed because if that was last year, I only have, I don't take pictures when they pass. We don't normally take pictures because it's good, we're not doing anything, we're just moving on. So I've asked all of them to contact me tomorrow or the next day, sometime before this has to be submitted to the tax collector, explain their reasoning. This gentleman had concerns that the documentation wasn't clear. I'll work with him on that to make a determination. And if justified, I still have the ability to remove the fee if we find that something wasn't up to par. Even if you approve it tonight, I can still say we were wrong, we were mistaken or something was not correct and we'll take that off. So we still have that option. But we need you to rule that it can stay on at this point so that if we don't come to that terms, we can still charge the fee that the county has already expended.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mo. So having heard that, I hope we can go ahead with a motion to, excuse me. I was just going, let me finish what I was going to say. Yeah, let's go ahead with a motion to approve the lien assessment and collection of fees on these private parcels with the caveat that staff will do a further analysis and if it's been proved that the city was at fault, the $96 would be waived. That's my motion. City attorney, Mr. City Attorney?
That's your motion, yes, okay.
That is my, that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you also have a comment, Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I have a question to Mo. So can I ask that?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I guess most of them are just confused with the three years.
Yes.
They need to stay on, even if they are compliant this year.
Yes.
And the only one that I'm concerned is the one where they are saying maybe there is a wrong address.
And I've discussed that, we're going to verify that at the time of the ad, it was their property. If it wasn't, they would be removed.
So you will work with them afterwards too?
Absolutely, every one of them has been asked to give me a call tomorrow or the next day.
So you were saying that it's very unlikely it's a wrong address because you do check with GPS and other technology?
It's possible but unlikely because we do use GPS, we do use electronic mapping systems. So we're normally pretty good about where we are.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so we have, Councilmember Moore, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mo, for working with everyone. I appreciate hearing about the timeline too. And I'm wondering if staff would consider having a static page on the website which goes over the calendar, perhaps so that people, when they get their letter from our clerk, that they've got a link to this page so they really understand when they need to come and contest. Because it seemed like this might not be well understood when they first get the letter. Or just having the static page lets people know the seriousness of receiving that letter. I wondered it myself, I went out in April and I was, I knew the deadline and I was weeding and it's, it was, it's been a really rough year for people with landscape, with all the weeds and the water. It's, it is a lot of work. But if we could have something that we can go to anytime during the year, I think that might help.
We'll certainly look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so we do, Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, so it sounds like the best way is not to come to the council meeting, but to contact the county or the city clerk beforehand. But somehow, that's not made very clear in the letter. So people don't take that better option because that way you have time to check the data, communicate with them rather than right here. Do you?
Sure with the letter that they have, other than they did give my contact information, my name and our phone number to call us if they had questions. And in the documentation that we send, not only do we include all that same information, we also tell them if they think they have special circumstances or need an extension to contact us. We can only say it so many ways.
All right, so let's vote by lights then.
The motion carries unanimously with Wei and Frue absent.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Mo. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned.